Second. Any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor, which is sufficient. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you call the rule, please?
Alderman Marshall here. Alderman Berks Fraser here. Alderman Henderson here. Alderman Telfrey. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Adams here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Uh, just for the record, I think both of our members are absent due to some, uh, medical appointments and things that they're dealing with. So, uh, they're certainly aware of the meeting and have received all the appropriate information for the meeting. All right, first item is the item five, approval minutes.
I move that the minutes for December eleventh be approved as emailed and part topic given to council members.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Question, discussion, correction to the minutes. Again, all in favor, show of hands, please. I see four in favor. Two absent. City Clerk's report. The city, the, uh, temporary city clerk told me to give the report. So she, uh, uh, y'all have your statement of revenues and expenditures. That's, uh, there in your packet. Of course, this is for, uh, the, actually, the entire calendar year twenty twenty-three. But of course, what we're gonna give you is, is the year, uh, today expenditures in each category. Very quickly, under the administrative, we spent four hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for the year. Law enforcement, we spent one million, five hundred fifty thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. For the fire department, we spent four hundred seventy-four thousand, four ninety-three sixty-nine cents. For sanitation department, one million, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Building department, building codes, thirty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and seven cents. District court. Ninety-six thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars, forty-six cents. The municipal building, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars, ten cents. Recreation, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars, sixty-one cents. Cultural center, nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. The National Guard Armory, uh, neighborhood center on Martin Street, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy dollars, eighty-eight cents. The shooting range facility, seventy-one thousand, one hundred eight dollars, sixty-three cents. The senior citizens center on Eth- North Etheridge Street, ten thousand, two dollars, eighty-five cents. The other category, things that did not fit in any of those, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred forty dollars and twenty cents. The airport, Warren Municipal Airport, thirty-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars, ninety-seven cents. Economic development activities, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents. And the street department, of course, a separate budget, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred eight dollars and fifty-four cents. And of course, there's all the different client items and everything are there.
I move that the segment of revenue and finances expenditures be approved as given by the mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any question or discussion on the finances? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor. Thank you. You also find, uh, the cash, city's cash balances. That is as of the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, encourage you to look at that. And of course, if you ever have any questions, please ask. You also see the city sales and use tax. Uh, the city, cities' individual sales tax or revenue in December twenty twenty-three was, uh, ninety-three thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Just for the record, for the total that we received in twenty twenty-three was a million, seventy-one thousand, five sixty-two thirty-one. We were up a good bit for the month, slightly down for the year. But it, it held pretty good. Next page, you got your, the city share of the county tax. Uh, it was, uh, also up for the month, sixty-four thousand, thirty-nine dollars, forty-seven cents. And was just pretty much broke even on the year. Think we were up three hundred and thirty dollars, so that's pretty well breaking even. Uh, any questions, please ask. District Court Clerk, we got their report. Again, this is still for twenty twenty-three. And then you've got the overtime report, quarterly report. If anybody's got any questions on any of this, be glad to try to answer them or get one department does too, needly. Any questions on any of the city clerk's financial reports? All right, under the mayor's report. I've got a couple of items here. Number one, uh, is a memo in your packet, dispose of equipment. You see, uh, three things there that were proposing to be, uh, disposed of. It's wore out equipment, things we don't have a need for, but they're on our inventory list. One is a water delivery system, fire department. Uh, one of them's a ninety-two Ford garbage truck, sanitation department. And one of them is a computer keyboard, police department. We just would like your permission to dispose.
I move that the city warrant be allowed to dispose these items listed on the inventory list.
Second.
Okay, motion's made.
Why keyboard is on the inventory list though?
Uh, I think because state orders are stolen, so it was to be. But we do try to inventory everything and amount anything, but anyway, uh. Question, discussion, I think we got a motion and a second, did we? Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Four in favor. Thank you very much. I realize after the agenda meeting the other day that I think I totally jumped over these two items. They were on the agenda, but I just didn't, for whatever reason, didn't mention them. But I think y'all can probably figure out item two, twenty twenty-four council committees. Now normally, we, we ask the city council to, you know, consider if y'all wanna leave your committee assignments and all as they are. Do you wanna make any changes? You don't have to do that tonight. You can do it later, or you can just leave it as it is. But I, I did wanna bring that up and see if anybody had any interest in any, any changes. I know two of our members are not here, but the committees are set by the council.
And in that particular item, did it come up and no one said anything?
Okay, did I mention it? I've got, I was fearful, I totally didn't mention it, but.
Didn't say anything about employee recognition and I thought.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that.
Because the two person was not here.
Y'all have any, or you'd rather just leave it for now?
I'm okay with it unless you wanna wait until.
Would y'all wanna wait till next month and bring it back up in case the other two's got anything they wanna say? Or y'all can just approve it as it is and we move on?
They didn't say anything at the agenda, so to get it off the agenda, I move that the, uh, twenty-four council committees remain as twenty twenty-three.
Second.
That's an appropriate motion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Okay, thank you, that's four in favor. Now, of course, we're gonna talk about this third item, employee recognition for some time. Me and the staff, uh, have been talking about how to try to set that up. Uh, I'm recommending to you that we do institute a program and do it on a quarterly basis. In other words, we would do somebody in March. Let's say it be June, I guess, and then September and then December. I would like, and I think Alderman Henderson, you had offered this to me. And I'm not sure if I got anything from you or not. I probably forgot to follow up on it. But you said there was some criteria that you're familiar with and the, the state.
I gave it to you.
Did, did you?
I did.
I probably have it in the file in there then.
Yeah.
I was gonna, we, we've been looking at, you know, exactly how to determine who's chosen. We're talking about one employees anyway, quarterly is what we're talking about doing. Uh, so I just wanted to see if that's okay with the council to, to approach it that way. Now, if you want me to bring back the criteria to you, we can do that as well. Or we could just administratively handle it.
Yeah, I don't know what was submitted.
I, I only submitted what he asked of me, uh, which was, and it's been, what, about seven or eight months ago? It's been a long time. Um, I can probably find it.
I'm, I'm, I may have it. I've done all that, what I had together, I probably have it in there and just forgot. That you sent it to me, because, uh, you did tell me you were gonna send me something, and I, I'm pretty sure you did. I just wanted to make sure. If I don't have it, I'll call you back.
Okay.
And I, I wanna proceed to put this together, 'cause we got, you know, a little bit of time. But I would like y'all to bless the process, so to speak. And if y'all okay, we're doing it quarterly and then we'll put.
And one person quarterly, what was the vision?
I guess originally we talked about monthly. Um, each department had recommend someone and then from that pool, then we were gonna make a decision. And either kinda increase the morale, basically. But I'm okay with whatever the council wants to do. Because I know you meet with the department, I guess, weekly?
I guess so.
Yeah, so, and then we're meeting ourselves.
And different agencies do it different or different, uh, even industries. I mean, uh, I know even Potlatch at one time, you know, did something on a monthly basis, uh, for safety. Uh, so it would just be what, what really you wanted to do, if it's on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. Uh, and then whatever the criteria, uh, is. And what I shared was what we do, uh, you know, as for the state. That was just, um, a guide, more or less, for this to utilize.
I'm okay with it, because we're all on the same committee.
I was gonna say, I think quarterly would be more easier, not easier, but.
Would they be coming before the city, that you wanted to come before the city council? The city council would.
So, so your idea is the city council approves.
Of course, what, what I'm, we're talking way back years when we've been talking about this.
Okay, that's, that's important aspect, though. If that's the way you're planning to do it, then we would need to go through whatever process and then present that individual to the council. Are you gonna do that?
Go to a committee and then go to the council. Let's do that. And with the person, they getting anything? What was your vision for that?
I would give them something.
I was gonna give them, they go pat on the back.
We talked about, we're not gonna, like, get them something, offer them donations or, um.
Give them some monetary, you know, something like that.
Yeah, we'll work on that before.
Okay. Well, let's, let me finalize that and then I'll get that to you. But we asked what we're gonna plan to move forward and try to do, that's okay. All right, thank you. Alderman, y'all, anybody recognized tonight to speak, uh, before the council? Has anybody signed, being around, would you check and make sure?
We're not gonna speak, we're just here to, to listen.
That's fine. I just didn't wanna skip somebody, needly, say something. Okay, all right, we'll move on, 'cause I don't think we have anybody signed in or otherwise, uh, notified us. Administrative and committee reports. Police Chief. Your report is in your packets. Evening.
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 Just have, uh, do believe you guys have my December, a month and four. Just have one correction on that, as of, um, last week, based on the January the fourth, the, um, civil service, we hired, um, four officers. So they put somebody off. At three thirty, four, four, three, four, nine, one, part time.
So are we four now?
Four now, four now. That, having that we are four staff in patrol division. And we are continually, um, taking application for, we have a dispatch position, have a general, a general position that we're trying, currently trying to fill. When in patrol, we are four staff.
And Chief, if I'm not mistaken, uh, there's only one of them hired that is non-certified, that will eventually have to go to the academy. Fortunately, the others are certified, I think, including the border pass. So that's good, that's always good. You got any, like, you know, if you need. Any, any questions for the police chief?
We got currently, we like to remove the forward handle control vehicle. And also, the, uh, we have put out, um, you know, stupid car dealership to look for a couple more control vehicles that would put in twenty twenty-four budget. So, uh, at this particular time now, we have more people than we have vehicles, so we're trying to get that figured out.
Anybody a little rushed, but anybody got any question? Chief, can you hang around just another minute? Okay, thank you. Uh, the police committee, Alderman, uh, Berks Fraser, you've got, we've got a few things there. I think we do have those two ordinances, we wasn't sure if we would have them or not, but we do. Uh, the dispatch study, I know you don't have anything there yet, but, uh, the RV parking, uh, one that was sometime back approved is proposed ordinance nine fifty-two. And that is on the general. But I should have that. And if we want to move forward, we would need to put it on its first reading.
I move that we put ordinance number nine fifty-two, RV parking on the first reading.
Second.
Got a second? Any question, discussion? This is for first reading. All in favor, show of hands, please. I see four in favor. I'll read you the ordinance, proposed ordinance nine fifty-two. To amend ordinance number seven forty. Ordinance number seven forty is hereby amended to allow permanent parking of RVs and/or campers to be pre-approved by the Warren Planning Commission. Procedure shall be to apply to the city Warren Building official for the following. Section one, permit must be applied for and obtained in advance by petition to the Warren Planning Commission. Petition will be filed with the city building official. Time should be set for a hearing, that'd be a public hearing by the planning commission. B, the applicant shall then obtain a notice and by all immediate adjoining residents stating they have been notified of the public hearing date and time. C, the planning commission shall then publish notice of the public hearing. D, the planning commission will conduct the public hearing and determine if and where an RV and/or camper may be parked. Section two, neither RVs nor campers can be lived in or worked in, and no utilities can be connected to either RVs or campers. Section three, no RVs or campers already existing are grandfathered in, but will need to apply for approval as if making its first application. Section four, to the extent necessary, this ordinance amends section eight point six point two, last paragraph on page twenty-four of the zoning ordinance, adopted January the tenth, two thousand, and ordinance number seven hundred forty generally. If approved, the permit will be granted to applicant. If the resident moves or sells the property, the permit is voided. Section five, the city council, having found there is an immediate need for the public health and safety to adopt this ordinance and emergencies hereby found exist, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and adoption. That is first reading.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine fifty-two on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, suspend the rules, place on second reading. Any question or discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Be for second reading, four in favor. Uh, this is the proposed ordinance nine fifty-two, to amend ordinance number seven forty. And ordinance number seven forty is hereby amended to allow permanent parking of RVs and/or campers to be pre-approved by the Warren Planning Commission. Procedure shall be to apply to city Warren building official and then the rest of the ordinance.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine fifty-two on the third and final reading.
Second.
We got a motion and second, this is for the final, final reading. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor. This is a proposed ordinance nine fifty-two and then ordinance number seven forty. And ord- ordinance number seven forty is hereby amended to allow permanent parking of RVs and/or campers to be pre-approved by the Warren Planning Commission. Procedure shall be to apply to city Warren building official for the fol- following criteria.
I move that we.
It's time.
Adopt ordinance, um, number nine fifty-two.
Second.
I got a motion and second. Now, the discussion is on adoption. Does anybody have a question or any discussion? The main thing I would just point out to you, and I wanna make sure that we've certainly done this the way you want it done, is that all of those RVs and campers that are out there right now, the building department will have to start the process of going to those, those people and tell them they gotta get those park- permitted to keep them.
We, we, we spoke to Rob during the committee, and he said there, there weren't that many.
Good.
So, 'cause I didn't want him to be overwhelmed just with this one task, and he said it, it wouldn't be.
We'll, we'll try to do promptly, but nevertheless, I just wanna be clear, yes ma'am.
Permit, is it per value or how much is the permit to me?
Well, there's not a, there's not a clause. They just gonna get a approval, you know, yes ma'am. We're not gonna charge anything.
And, and what happens if they do not comply?
Uh, I guess we would have to file, um, non-compliance with them and carry the court.
I thought we, I thought it was gonna be a ticket.
Well.
And the first time and then the second time.
You wanna put a penalty in here, then we probably need to amend it to do that.
Members talking about that with the animals.
I thought we said that for.
Well, you may have, you may have, I just, but, good deal, we just failed to put that part in there.
There has to be something to it, too, but why would anybody do it?
You gotta have an enforcement procedure. You could fine them, but, uh, you know, basically, I think we would probably issue a citation, asking judge, uh, the court allow us to remove it.
Right. How like we would if it was a trailer home?
Mm-hmm.
I'll go back and look and see what we had.
Do, do you, do you wanna leave this and, and look into that further and then consider amending it or? If you'd like to do that, you can do that.
I think we should go ahead and pass, I mean, if vote, and then we can go back and amend it with the, um, enforcement.
The motion and second, I believe, is to adopt, is that correct? So that's what's on the floor, so if you vote to do it, then this would be adopted, you may amend it anytime.
As many kinds as you want.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion or question or substitute motion of any kind? All right, all those in favor of adoption of the ordinance as presented, please show by bowing your hand. I see fi- uh, four in favor, and there is an emergency clause.
I move that we adopt ordinance number, the emergency clause, for nine fifty-two.
Motion's made and seconded, that the emergency clause of ordinance nine fifty-two be adopted. Any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. I see. Uh, who made the motion? Uh, chairman, who seconded it?
Second, committee member.
I'm sorry?
Second.
I said committee member.
Got you all. Sorry about that. I thought my clerk up here was catching you seconded, that was my fault.
I missed out.
All right, uh, Madam Chairman, uh, you've also got proposed ordinance nine fifty-three. This was the so-called livestock inside the city limits. And, uh, you wanna proceed with that, we may do so.
I move that we place ordinance number nine fifty-three for the first reading.
Second.
Got that? All right. Got a motion second, proposed ordinance nine fifty-three on first reading. Any question or discussion of that motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor. Proposed ordinance nine fifty-three and ordinance to amend ordinance number two oh seven, number eight thirty-five. Governing, owning, and maintaining livestock within the city limits of Warren. No person shall keep, harbor, or maintain, care, custody, or control within the city limits of Warren, Arkansas, any small or large hoofed livestock without first obtaining a permit therefore issued by the city of Warren subject to the following. Number, number one, no animals are to be grandfathered in. Permits must be applied for all existing animals. Number two, prior to being permitted, a petition signed by all adjoining property owners to the site where the animals are to be maintained must be signed granting their approval. Number three, all existing nuisance and noise ordinances remain in effect, and any violation is grounds for legal action to remove the animals. Ordinance, uh, section four, number four, ordinance number two oh seven, number eight thirty-five amended and a ordinance herewith, and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Five, whereas the running at large of animals and fowls within the corporate limits of the city of Warren has become dangerous to the public health and safety and emergency is hereby declared, and should say this ordinance, I'm sorry, I'll see that. This ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, the same shall be in full force from and after its passage.
I move that we place ordinance number nine fifty-three. I suspend the rule, I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine fifty-three on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion second, suspend the rules, second reading. Any question or discussion on that motion? All in favor, show of hands, please. I see four in favor. Second reading, ordinance number nine fifty-three and ordinance to amend ordinance number two oh seven, number eight thirty-five governing, owning, and maintaining livestock within the city limits of Warren.
I move that we place ordinance, uh, I suspend the rules. I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine fifty-three on its third and final reading.
Second.
All right, motion second, suspend the rules, plus, and place nine, proposed nine fifty-three on its third and final reading. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, show of hands. Proposed ordinance nine fifty-three and ordinance to amend ordinance number two oh seven and number eight thirty-five governing, owning, and maintaining livestock within the city limits of Warren.
I move that we adopt number, ordinance number nine fifty-three.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Now, may I make a comment before y'all vote? I'm not opposed to this or anything, but I, after I, I got it and read it, and of course, I think we submitted this to the city attorney. He tried to put together what we told him to do. I do have a concern, and, and maybe this was addressed by the committee previously, and I don't remember if it was or not. But number two there, I just want y'all to look at that, I think that may need amending. Prior to being permitted, a petition signed by all adjoining property owners to the site where the animals to be maintained must be signed granting their approval. Now, if I'm reading that right, Mr. Clayton can, can comment if he needs to. If we adopt this ordinance with that wording, it's gonna mean any one person adjacent to that property, even if everybody else thinks it's okay, including the council, that it, it would stop it. It would, it wouldn't go any further. And the second thing that I don't, I don't think's in here that should be, there should be an appeal that somebody can go to. It would be in the planning commission's case, you see, somebody's gotta go to the planning commission. This doesn't say they gotta go to anybody. I think they either need to go to the planning commission or the adjustments of the, uh, appeals board or somebody for a final approval, even if everybody signs it. Are y'all following me? Cause this doesn't give any limitedated body or appointed body, like the planning commission, or, you know, any final say-so about it. And just because everybody might agree to it in any one case, there could be overwhelming reasons not to do it. Not saying that'd be the case, but it could be. So those are the two things that, that concern me, is that we're, we're granting, uh, technically, probably four property owners on, on, could be more than that, but, but property owners on all sides. Any one of them could just say, I don't want them to have horse, uh, uh, livestock out there. Any kind of livestock, that would include horses.
I thought, I didn't think we had. I thought that on this one involved Rob again, going out, and. I can't, I have to look at my, my notes, and I didn't bring all those, I didn't. But do you remember the times, what we in the committee, but there was, we had, there's more to it.
Well, ma- ma- maybe, I guess what I'm gonna suggest to you is, you got it on the, you know, motion, but you could still table it to the next meeting, and y'all can look at that, see if there's other language that needs to go in it, and we can get it amended.
Okay.
Before you even adopt it.
Yeah, I think that's what, I move that we.
But you do a substit-, you can move to table it. Which means we wouldn't vote on it.
I move that we table this until the committee can look over what we agreed on, and then I'll re-suspend it.
I got a motion, there is a second. Everybody clear on what we're doing, now, right now, you can just bring this back up, the next meeting, vote to put it back on, you know, the, untable it, and then you should simply can vote on it then. Or you can amend it and then vote on it.
Another thing to consider also, maybe a piece of land where you have one owner on this side, like they're home sitting here. Here's a field, where they wanna put an animal, and you got the person on the other side. So, you're gonna have a battle between individuals.
But that's where Rob came in.
The two individuals.
That's where Rob, and I can't remember what.
But Ro- Rob, there's gotta be some kind of governing body that's got the rule on it, yes.
They were back to the planning commission. We, they were going back to the planning commission, but I'll go back and pull that.
Okay, okay.
I'll pull my notes.
All right, we didn't vote on that, did we, with the motion to table?
No.
Okay, I, we got, everybody clear, we got a motion to table where it stands right now. Any other discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Thank y'all, four, four in favor, so we, that will be something left there. Uh. Council, if, madam chair, uh, I th- I think y'all might want to be aware, you got a, I think you got somewhere in your packet, do they have this? Where we hired, the firemen and the policemen that we, we hired, we're just making y'all aware of this, do y'all have that there in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, will you see the four people that were hired? And I think I misstated earlier, I think the, it's the part-time person that's not certified. Okay, this is stated wrong. Mr. Hudson, part-time, is a certified policeman.
Mr. Hudson is a non-certified.
Non-certified, okay, I said it right, okay, I'm sorry.
He's part-time?
No, he's full-time.
He's full-time?
We got it, we got it wrong on your, all right, help me.
Part-time.
Mr. John Oscar Hudson the third, is he a full-time or part-time?
Yes, he's part-time a little bit. Is he part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time.
Okay, I thought that's what I said.
Will this cut down on some of the overtime?
Hudson. He's, he's full-time, he's non-certified.
Okay.
All right, we got, we got this written down.
Ellis is certified full-time. Hoffman is certified full-time. Henry is certified part-time.
All right, I'm sorry about that, I'm gonna make sure we had that right. So, y'all got all that, that's just for your information, that's what the city service commission did.
Hey, will this cut down some of the overtime?
I hope so, yes ma'am, it should.
And, uh, I'll just go ahead and, I know the fire department, uh, you can see the two, but, we ended up with two vacancies when we first started out. Advertising, and Fire Chief's here, because he'll give us the four next, but, uh, you can see that we had one, one vacancy, and then about the time, we ended up with two applicants to fill the vacancy, and about that time, we lost another full-time fireman. So both were qualified, one certified, one's gotta get certified. Mr. Jolly, uh, was hired, uh, cause he's already a volunteer fireman, he's hired a full-time fireman, he is not certified, he will have to get some more schooling, and then Mr. Cameron, uh, we hired him when the other vacancy occurred, he is a certified fireman, and I might add, even teaches at the fire academy, so we think we've got us a pretty good trainer and instructor, and also be, be join us that can maybe do some things in-house for us as well. His main job will be a, a fireman, but he can certainly help us with some other things. So I just wanted y'all to have all that, yes ma'am?
Looking, looking at the animal controller report where it says pit bull complaints twenty-five, whatever complaints.
Normally it's getting out, uh, I haven't seen, uh, his actual weekly reports, he can keep detail notes. So, but we haven't had any attacks.
Okay, that was, I guess my one, whether there'll be a tax or.
We had a few that, that got out and chasing people, but no, no issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Chief, thank you. Council member Burke Stranger, does that wrap you up, or do you have anything else you need to say, or?
That's all three.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll go to Fire Chief for caller.
Good evening.
Sit in your pack.
Uh, I want to fire for our fund to clear up cobbles during the month of December. Uh, we did not phone out any fire calls, thank goodness, we did have one call for an expiration. Uh, volunteer payroll will date clear on fifty-fourth of the month. On December the fourth, we had our monthly meeting and training at the old armory, twenty-five, remember, present, and we finished up our fire duty fifteen for the year. Got all that taken care of. We've gotten all our equipment in that we got on the grant, and, uh, updates from when I did this report, the man will be here tomorrow to hook everything up, and we will get that done, we're having a monthly meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, holidays, and we've got all that stuff in service. Going, and as Mary said, we did have the opportunity to hire two candidate candidates, one is certified, and one will have to go to the fire academy sometime later this year.
Questions for the chief? How are we doing on collecting from insurance companies on fire, that's the set, thank you.
Yes.
Any comments on any of that?
Some, I have resent some letters, some, some, hey, just like that, and, I don't know.
Looks like, all, all the two of the fires listed did have some insurance.
Right, right.
Question, are you sending them letters to the individuals or to the insurance company?
The letter goes to the individual, but it is plainly stated, this is not you, you need to turn this in to your insurance company.
Cause I know I've got one here who does have insurance, I haven't done it with it.
Well, I, he, the, that's, the way the ordinance is written, and the, the letter, we have a whole letter. And it goes to the owner of the property, but it plainly says, this is not yours, so they turn this over to your insurance company. And what I try to do is, they always come for a fire court. I don't give them a fire court until I give them that letter, I give them it all at the same time, cause I know they're probably gonna give a fire court for the insurance company, so hopefully they'll turn it, they'll have it at the same time, so.
There's two that I know that's on here, cause I've had a couple, but two of them, these are wrong addresses, and I'm gonna get them from that.
The wrong address that the fire occurred?
The customer, this is the, not the correct address.
Okay, well, I've come by.
Trying to help you get paid.
I've come by to see, to see what that is, cause that's the address we got from when we had the fire.
Is the dress supposed to be where the fire occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
Not necessarily where they live, unless it's personal business.
This last one here, this is where the fire occurred, but that's not where the person lives.
Oh, well, that's all we put, the address you got is the address of the fire. Not necessarily the address of the owner, cause some of them be a run.
So if you're sending, uh, sending the letter to this address that's on here.
Right, no ma'am, I'm sending the letter to the actual owner, that's just.
Okay, that's not.
Right, no ma'am, I know what you're talking about.
This is the location of the fire.
Yes, yes, we got like two rentals, and that's just the location of the fire, yes ma'am. And you're right, the owner address is different. You are right about that.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, of course, not any other fire committee business. We'll move to sanitation, y'all ready, Mr. Johnson? Uh. First of all, nothing to worry on solid waste.
Any questions on that, I'm glad to answer if I can.
We got two items, I'll, make sure y'all got any questions certain you can ask them, but, uh, we got still, our maintaining on there, our solid waste future plans, and what that's all about is to refresh your memory. And we're, we're working on some things that we wanna do as far as, hopefully, we're still hopeful that this facility in Chico County's gonna get constructed. But it's, you know, it's not there, so I don't know how long that's gonna be, but it can cut our disposal costs in half if we ever get that done. Meantime, we gotta keep landfilling, and I hope y'all noticed that the only budget that was over a million dollars last year, other than police, was solid waste, and that was primarily for disposal costs. That's what, that primarily was driving that. So, uh, we're gonna be working on that plus some recycling plans that we hope to bring to you. Uh, the other thing you got, uh, council member Atkins, we, uh, I think I did mention this to you, uh, the other morning, we've got a, this is a routine thing, but we, we need to do it. Uh, we have, we enter this contract, and club engineers, they do all the reports and everything that has to be done on our landfill. City still owns a class one and class four landfill adjacent to the county landfill, not in use, been closed down for years. We have to keep it permitted under state law until we can get it closed out, which we're hoping to do. We have to pay permit fees, we have to send in reports, this is to make sure that they take care of the reports. And I'm asking your approval of this, please.
I move that we accept a proposal for McLennan Consulting. McLennan.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, consulting engineers for the professional ser- engineering services at the cost of sixty-five hundred dollars. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands, thank y'all. And, uh, council member Atkins, anything else you want to mention or anything?
Are you getting a monthly, quarterly update about the landfill, or just?
You mean the Chico County, but it's a waste energy facility, uh, from, through the Arkansas, uh, the southeast Arkansas Economic Development District, yes ma'am. But I don't have a whole lot due to it yet.
Okay.
Just yet, but, yes. All right, I'm gonna go building official, Mr. Johnson, put that hat on, they've got your permits issued, report, anything else you, and then of course, you got some properties to talk about.
Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have one, I'm sorry, I just gonna get under the sanitation.
All right.
Um, can you elaborate in, on the trash pickup letter that went out to the Main Street merchants?
Did it solve? Yes ma'am, uh. The dumpsters in the back of the, of the alleys have been causing us serious problems. Uh, to the point of costing the city a lot of money, uh, to maintain them, keep them clean. Uh, the letter was sent out to let the people know that we'll offer a six-day-a-week trash pickup at their store. We do not have first containers, but we don't first container for residents either, uh, to bag and send trash either out front or at the rear of the property. Uh, it had worked on the, uh, east side of Main Street, uh, cause I did it first, and we removed, uh, four dumpsters on that side, and it seemed to have rectified that problem on that, on that side, and the warrant made especially to stick up there, cause that lady, nobody walked by going to work anymore. Well, we tried it again on the, uh, west side of Main, uh, after months of cleaning up, so. And, uh, we, uh, it's, it's, it's not the homeless people doing it all. Uh, we talked one a couple of summers ago, from out of town, uh, I'm gonna say out of town, outside city limits, and they filled up the Eagle.
The one behind the Eagle?
The one behind the Eagle, Democrat, uh, by the report of my driver. Uh, we have eliminated, right now, right at seventeen dumpsters in town. Uh, and, uh, you know, why didn't see any post office, just several different ones that I went around and talked to, explained to them what we'll do for, just to eliminate, what I'm trying to do is concentrate the dumpsters in certain locations, uh, I mean, it, it tells you, if you don't have ten to look after, it's a lot easier to catch people. And that's what we're trying to do, I've got full, full, uh, uh, the captain of the judge, Bruce Anderson, has, has gave me his full cooperation and will find and ask by people for dumping class four. Class four, not just regular household garbage, class four, be it furniture, mattresses, and stuff like that, in them. And we're just trying, we're just trying to get it cut down, because it's not doing anything but costing the people a warning. Uh, I mean, it, it's just, and we have a county dump. Uh, I've tried to tell them that you can go out there and, uh, small feet.
For the class four material, let's be clear about what we're dumping.
And, and the residents of Warren have no reason to take this stuff to a dumpster, because we offer a five-day-a-week pickup at their home. So, why, you know, we just, we just pulled a mattress out of the one at the old Chevrolet place. Out there on, you know, and, and we've eliminated three or four over to school, because they were just being bombarded by everybody but the school. So, but that was the reason for the letter. I am gonna go around and see how it's going, see if there's anything else the city can do, or provide more, but the six days a week, we're even running the alleys twice a day, uh, after we do it in the morning, after we collect cardboard, then we run back through any time between twelve and two, to make sure nobody has anything out. Uh, and we can do that, I mean, our downtown's small, and this service just runs from the old Kentucky Fried Chicken to the post office, we offer everybody in that area that, that type of pickup. Uh, but it, it's getting out of hand, it, it, we're doing the stuff.
I understand, I mean, cause that time, not just myself and others.
Right.
People out the back door to dump some trash, there's people in it.
Yeah, yeah, and I was.
Landowners, promoters, looking at everything, but as far as the business owners, where do you put the trash at the back door?
You can put it in the back, back, or the front, and well, if, if you have it in the front, it will be an earlier pickup, you know, cause we come through at seven. Anytime after seven, we come through, and we're usually through on Main Street by eight thirty. But if you want it at the rear to pick up, we're al- we're also covering both sides, the alleys and main, so it's not gonna matter.
So if the trash is put out in the evening, and then, and someone decides to go through it?
That's, that's just like anybody's house or any curb do it now, I mean, I, we can't stop that, but they, it's, it's no different than throwing it in the dumpster, they throwing it back out.
I just wanna get a clear understanding, some owners would understand it, if I put my trash at the back of my office, in a bag, and I come in the next morning, or just wherever, and someone's going through it, and it's scattered all over the back, who's gonna clean that up?
You would, your problem.
I will clean it up.
Yes ma'am, your problem.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll try to do what we can in that case. It's, it, it's, it's just like my house. Dogs, the dogs get in my garbage. It's my responsibility to clean it up, not, not, however, however, having said that, this is one of the reasons I don't wanna farm out our collection system, because we will do our best, especially if it's not scattered from one inch, you know, but it, we'll, we'll do our best to clean it up the best we can, especially in the downtown area. We're also gonna do our best to police it. We're also gonna do our best to police it. Now, that's totally impossible, uh, one hundred percent, I'm not gonna make bones about that. And I will spend all night on this, but Rob is correct, it is a, we got two major problems. We got tons of garbage being brought in from outside the city limits of Warren, and some of it from inside the city limits of Warren. From businesses that have, they're not paying for those containers, those are a sand to individual businesses. Now sometime multiple businesses, but individuals. Their garbage bills are all higher too, by the way, if they have one of those containers.
Forty dollars a month.
Yeah, minimum, it can be more than that, depending on.
It's not extra, no, it's not extra, it's forty minimum anyway on commercial, minimum, whether you have a dumpster or not. It should be fifty if you have a dumpster, but we haven't been charged because a lot of them have shared dumpsters.
Well, the, the, just for everybody's information and, and the public, when this system was first set up in the early nineteen, mid nineteen seventies, the containers were put out there really to help the, the higher volume garbage producers. And gar- very garbage didn't cost very much. And so we just didn't worry about it all that much, we just picked up whatever was being put up there. Most of it was not even sacked up, which is supposed to be sacked of garbage, even in the containers. That's long ago quit being done by a lot of people. So, two, two things are happening, and you already touched on it. We've got people in town that wander around at night. And I've had all kinds of reports from people that have called them at their businesses in the dumpsters, getting out what they can salvage, just throwing the rest of it out on the ground. They'd be going through sacks too, in some cases. We do have some animal issues, we've tried to address that, but that does happen. I got enough cats in my neighborhood to, you know, even, I, I, I bought me a container just to set my garbage in with a top on it to keep the animals out of it, not people, but animals. But the other thing we've been having, and it's been going on for a long time, it's not a new deal. The container Rob was talking about on the other side of Main Street, it was right behind my son's business. We were getting body shop parts, windshield that had been taken out of cars, all thrown in it. We caught people throwing concrete in it. I caught some people doing that. Hey, it's a garbage container, it's for everybody, though, whatever you want to do in it. That's, you know, we can't, some of that's illegal to be put in there. So, that's what he's trying to address, but we do want to take care of our businesses, that's why we're especially the, the retailers and what have you, to, to, you know, try to give them more pickups a week. Just set the garbage out there in the sack. Now, we, we may, we may have some problems with somebody or something getting in some of it, I'm not gonna say that won't happen. We will do our best to take care of them. And certainly let us know if you keep having problems with something like that, no matter what the situation is. Is that fair, says to Rob?
Yes, sir. Yeah, six days a week pickup is really unheard of, but to keep it clean back there. We had that problem with the wine and post office, they've all, they've all brained it, but always worked out. And, and we're coming through it anyway, so we might as well stop pick up, you know, stop that we're having a lot out of the way.
But, but I will say this to everybody, in all businesses, if you have a problem, let us know. Okay? Let us know, and we will do anything and everything we can. And, uh, I have asked Rob to go back to all the merchants particularly, and, and just talk to them, not send a letter, but talk to them, make sure they know what we're trying to do, and if there's any issue, see if we can address it some way. And I, and, and Councilmember, uh, uh, Marshall has brought some of this to my attention, what we're doing, so. And we've been talking about it, but, uh, everybody clear?
Any ideas, Mr. Marshall, that you have, I'm, I'm, I'm open to it, we, we're just trying to make it better.
I, I understand, because I, I.
And keep our cost down, we don't want to haul everybody the county's garbage off, thank you, Rob.
Just want to make sure everyone else understands the process of, of dumping, because I'm on both sides.
Sure.
The city council side, but also a business owner's side. So, I understand that, but I want to make sure it's brought out to everyone else to understand it as well.
We will try our best to communicate with everybody. Maybe better than we have, even, we'll try to do that.
I'll, I'll do that, I'm sorry, I'll do better.
We got the little act of the dumpster.
Okay. Uh, USP.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, should have been notified.
There was a post on Facebook today about if you need junk called off to call the sanitation. I think that's a nice.
And that's including class four materials, that's, you know, we've always had that system too.
But people could, but I don't do that. Right, people, yeah.
We put them all up on the list and get to them as fast as we can for one of the things, I hope this new piece of equipment we get is gonna speed that process up. City attorney, did you have something you need to add?
Doctor, what class four material is?
It's not, it's, it's everything, it's not, not household garbage. It's junk, it's furniture, it's appliances, it's electronics, it's, uh, uh, car windshields. That kind of stuff, basically. Is that right, Rob, you might give the right description? Yeah, it's stuff you can't put in the garbage bag.
You may need your research specifically, so some people can.
Well, we, we probably ought to get some more publicity out of that, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, everybody good on that topic?
I, I have a question about that topic.
Go ahead.
Um, ten oh seven Jones Street, the Jesse Jacobs, uh, home. And I walk in that area and they have made a number of improvements. What is actually lacking in order for them to be in compliance, I guess? I know, uh, Joel has tried to explain to me this big heap of dirt that is there to fill in holes. Uh, I'm not sure why that is there, but all of those cars, the actual log truck with the trailer, all of that is gone. Now, there is an older one of those collectible cars that's in the back. Uh, but the truck that, where the motor was taken out is now running.
Well, I, the, the log truck and trailer were back today, and there is a vehicle in the rear of the property. Uh, and I went by there today approximately ten thirty, log truck was there, trailer was there, there was forces tied up with ropes and eighty bales all over everywhere. Uh, the property needs a general cleanup, we hadn't done anything to it. We hadn't talked, we hadn't went over there to do one thing yet. We've sent a letter after letter, tried to comply with it because I, I know the, the circumstances. Uh, it's a, a general cleanup and the automobile's gotta go, and, uh.
There were several automobiles, so you're saying.
A lot of them gone, but there's still one in the rear.
No, there's one in the rear that's one of those classical type cars.
Well, if, if it's not insured, off the board, it's gone, but we hadn't done anything, I still haven't been by to talk to Mr. Jacobs.
So I don't know if they're using that log truck, because, and, and I don't walk in the rain, so I wasn't by there today to see that.
Well, there's no ordinance against him parking his log truck at his home.
But at one point it was disconnected from the bed.
It was, yes ma'am, but it's attached today and, and, and it didn't have, it didn't have any arms on it, but I went by and looked it all up today, uh.
And it does have an animal in the yard as well.
Uh, what?
An animal?
Oh, two of them, yes ma'am.
So what's your recommendation, next thing we need to do?
I need to sit down and talk to Mr. Jacobs and let him know what he needs to do, just that simple, but it, 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 uh, it, it just, during the holidays and all this other, it just, it just had happened.
Why, why don't we, uh, I'm, just a recommendation, um, whether, whatever, I think the answer to Councilmember, uh, Henderson's question or comment is, it's kind of whatever y'all say it is.
Yeah, but we want, we, we want to treat everyone the same. So if there's something that is out of compliance, I mean, it looks a whole lot better than what it initially did when, when I went by there, and I didn't.
I was thinking about, was there already told to the lady that made a complaint, because all of my actions are done on complaint forms? And see, if she's satisfied, I, I have thought about that, I just hadn't got around to it.
I, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in here, that's not the way to enforce the law.
Well, it's not the way to.
And, and the reason I say that is, some people don't mind people going sixty miles an hour or something, you know, past their house in a thirty-five mile per hour zone. And I'm, I'm, I understand what you're saying, Rob, I actually do. But either it's against the law, or it's not against the law, and we need to enforce it accordingly. It's just like you're saying fairly.
Yeah, my, my question was, what did, what else, like what you said, the direction you were gonna get with him? Uh, I guess I was asking what, because his property two weeks ago looked as good as some of the other homes within our areas. Uh, so I was trying to see
Yes, ma'am.
where, where we were, what else did he need to do? Because it really wasn't him that was doing it, it was friends and neighbors and, uh, etcetera, that, that had come to his rescue.
The, the automobiles were one of the complaints that was filed on it, and they, and then we did the, uh, unsightly, unsanitary, which, I never, how you wanna read that, I was hoping.
Okay, and we extended, so he still has some grace time there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you've answered our question, thank you.
I, I would recommend we let Rob go talk to them again and go over those things specifically, as he was talking about doing.
That's what he said he was wanting to do.
Yes, that's, I, I think that's an appropriate thing to do, so.
And because of his condition, you know, I'm, I'm not sure who, whoever else is there helping, but maybe that person, when you talk to them, maybe ask who is helping so that they can be there to comprehend what is going to be here.
Uh, what was just going over these other lists here, Rob, while we're at it, you got a copy of it that they did since the twenty-third. Those are not to be condemned, those are properties you've recently, uh, started on, is that correct?
Well, we, we sent the letters and.
There's three, three on there, everybody got that? And then you got the four, we already talked about Philip Street, you got the other four, but you got a quick rundown on those?
Four oh five Lock Street, uh, that y'all condemned, uh, once again, I went back by there today also, just to do a follow-up. Uh, he's cleaned up the front yard, the rear and the side, and now the carport's the same as it was last six months. Uh, the gentleman lives there, uh, the gentleman, I mean, it, it, a complaint was filed on it, uh, unsightly, unsanitary, and get cleaned up, uh, so I hadn't done anything, to be honest with you, I, I, we talked to him, we gave him, we condemned it, and then the city gave him another month to get it cleaned up. It's not anything done, the guy living there, I mean, there's no water on his house. He, he tries every down end to clean it up, and then it, it, it just seems to stop, so. It's whatever y'all tell me, I mean, whatever y'all tell me, then I'll do. Uh, because we do have ordinances, we do it. Four oh seven Turner Street, uh, i- if you've noticed on the corner of Turner and Central, that, uh, Mr. Nichols, uh, cleaning robbery up, he moved the drags, he replaced some boards, redid the front porch, and is in the process of selling, uh, I, I, I think it's, it's pretty much taken care of, Nick was only condemned this, gave him time, he brought it back around. The property one oh eight West Central, that was also condemned and approved, it's been torn down. Had it up, because I found some people living in it on, on a check, when I was by there to check on. Uh, the owner of the property lost his wife, uh, during all this, not because of this, but during all this procedure that we done on one oh eight West Central, and he now is in the process of trying to sell one oh eight West Central, and is asked if, if he could have that time, and I agreed, and I said, yes, sir, and we'll go forward with that, and I'll just keep, I'll just keep out.
Rob, is that the one with the two different structures on it?
It's got the carport in the rear.
Everybody know what we're talking about, there's a two-story garage, it used to be even an apartment, maybe at the top. Now, that building is literally falling in. It needs to go, and it needs to go soon. Again, I don't have any problem with giving a little bit more time, that is, the house is probably fixable, you correct me if I say something wrong, Rob.
Right, that's the reason.
It's not in good shape, but it's probably fixable, but we just got it boarded up and, you know, the yard has been cleaned up some.
That's the reason I boarded it up, and, I mean, the city's got a lien that we're fixing to file on this piece of property, and, uh, we got several people in the neighborhood that's looking maybe to purchase it, if they work out a deal with the gentleman.
Thank you, Rob, any, any questions on anything, yes ma'am?
I have been talking on Qu- Quelkett Street, and the wall.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, an individual called me last week that someone, that person still live there.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I got a text about that as well.
Update them.
Uh, to be honest with you, ma'am, I'll have to go back to my notes, because I got in an argument with the owner of the property, the Star Web, and he said, she said, and I had to do some more investigating, and to be honest with you, I, I have not.
Well, was there not a plan to come forward and ask the planning commission to re?
Yes, sir, that was the plan, but there.
To rezonate?
No, ma'am.
To, to reapprove the old home?
Oh, okay.
And if they didn't do it, of course, something would've been.
The last conversation, he was gonna tell the people that lived there to reapply from over on, kind of like we get on the forest road. And, but I haven't, I haven't followed up.
We, we need to follow up on that, we don't need to let that keep riding.
Because this, I mean, that particular property, a couple of years, it's the same thing over and over again.
Yeah, he just keeps, he goes, one, and, and, like, seven years.
It's a stall.
It's, it's a stall. Because at one time, he supposedly sold it to his daughter.
Right, right, right.
And that's been a couple of years ago.
We'll, uh, we'll get on that, even make something happen, do something, one or the other.
And Alden told, he said that he was going to talk to Mr. Barnett about the five oh four, Rob. He'd been working with him on that.
Okay. Uh, well, we haven't done anything, uh, just kind of back off. Uh, the property, the burned house at two thirty-six Wheeler, it's on the corner of Wheeler and Martin. Uh, it has changed hands, and Mr. Victor, or, or, I may not be saying it right, Mr. Victor Artara has purchased it, uh, him and his family, uh, his, his relatives have also purchased several pieces of property in Warren. Cherry Street for one, Martin Street for other, the row of Howes on Martin. Uh, Cherry Street south of, north of the Deloitte residence. They're, everything they buy, the corner of Fullerton and, and Central also, everything they buy, they're turning it over, they're turning it around and cleaning it up. I talked to Mr. Victor today, he promises me he'll have the house down and the lot cleaned in, in, within the next two months.
That's a, that's a house burn, maybe that house burned.
And I gave, I gave him permission on that, he did try, however, to let y'all know, he did try to burn the house, the fire department, but without getting water from across Martin Street, the fire department can't do it. Of course, they did it when they put it out, because of emergency, but, and, uh, so they, they denied burning it and tearing it down. So this guy is going to tear it down, haul it off himself. I gave him several contractors that did that, and he, he was going to contact them.
I asked about the Logana, Jack went up the old day during our agenda, the, the rope is pretty much gone.
I, I, I've got some updated information, man, I was about to forget, I'm sorry, but, uh, if I could, uh, give you this report. I got a, got a call from the wife of the owner. They want to list it as available industrial property, they want to sell it. And they're asking to put it on our AEDC website. Now, that does not address the issue that you asked about, which is, you know, what they're gonna do to the, to the building. My, if my understanding is, nothing, they're just gonna try to sell it.
As is.
As is. Um, I've got to get back with them, because I've got to talk to AEDC, and I, I don't mind, you know, having a market for industrial use or, or business use. I'm sorry?
I'd be embarrassed.
Uh, well, I mean, we find somebody who'll use it, is what I'm saying, for, you know, and, and ref- refix it and all that nice stuff. But I don't think their intention, I'll, I'll just get that clarified, is to do anything to it, or to try to sell it right now. So, but I, I just got that today. So, but I, I just got that today, literally today. Other questions for Mr. Johnson, he's got his hands full with a lot of stuff, and he is working on it, or trying to be reasonable with people. Just to put it in South Arkansas language, we get jacked around a lot. And, uh, that's my word, not, uh, not his, but I'm, I'm telling you, it happens.
We met your new assistant? She came to our Ways and Means Committee.
Oh, his Melissa, yeah, great, yes, ma'am, she's really good, really good.
Any questions to Mr. Johnson on any, any other, any of that, those items, or anything else, anything, Rob, thank you?
No, sir.
Okay, appreciate you, appreciate you much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hearn's Burger Street?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I know it sounds like playing my record, but we do, what we do, that's, buy a hole, dig in ditches, picking up trash, uh, making improvements wherever we can, uh, and feel like we're making a, a good headway, eh? Just waiting on this, wait the truck, the vacuum truck to get in, start cleaning these streets up, making the town look better. We, our future plans are, within the next couple of weeks, start digging and cleaning the, the ditches on West High and Street. Uh, there, there are some areas that, that need it real bad, we did, actually got one place where some tree roots has grown up through the asphalt, that we've got to clean out, fix that, but. We, uh, just finished cleaning, uh, Frank James Street, and it's, well, it's been raining young, Frank James, it's, it's doing good, we over there this afternoon, watering where it's supposed to be. So, that's, uh, that's how I think.
Questions for the street farmer? Uh, the street committee, I know it's not Mad Alderman, uh, Olesley couldn't be here tonight, did she ask any of y'all to give any report on anything?
No, but we're gonna meet in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, to, to look at, uh, additional streets to be paved, and of course, still got the matter of the Oak Street speed breaks, that's been, you know, you requested, and that was a sign of the street committee, so. Council members, I'm gonna ask you to consider one other thing, it's not on the agenda, because this just came in to me today, but I think you will like it. Uh, it's from the Arkansas Department of, uh, Transportation concerning our grant, uh, for some three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to pave some additional streets. I'm gonna ask you, you'd amend the agenda and put this on the agenda, so I'm fully briefing it and ask for a vote.
I move that the, uh, agenda be amended, and that under eight street foreman, uh, no, shouldn't be I, street committee, uh, the Arkansas Department of Transportation should grant the.
Okay, that's a motion, a second, any question, discussion, this is to amend the agenda. All in favor, show of hands, I see four in favor. Uh, this is, uh, actually, it's a letter, it's dated January fourth, but we just, uh, we just got it. We'd already been notified, the three hundred thousand dollars that we had applied for sometime back, had been approved, but we hadn't received any final instructions, this is what to do. And, uh, we received, uh, a resolution that they're asking us to submit or approve, and then move forward. And I don't know what a resolution number would be, we happen to know what the next resolution number would be?
Six ninety-one.
Six ninety-one?
Yeah, six ninety is actually the one to, uh, amend the budget.
All right, well, we need to put six ninety-one probably on this one, since we've already got that over on there, so, uh, if I could read this to you, and just ask for a, for a vote, I'll try to explain it if we need to. State aid city street program project resolution, proposed resolution six ninety-one, a resolution expressing the willingness of City of Warren to utilize state and street monies for the following city projects, Warren Overlays. Whereas the City of Warren understands that the state aid street program funds are available for certain city projects in following locations, at, at the following participating ratios, and then it has information on here, uh, reconstruction and resurfacing, it's all about, uh, A D. Work phase, uh, a construction of city projects, work phase, preliminary engineering, construction engineering, right-of-way utilities and construction, state aid would be one hundred percent for the engineering, that's basically to be looked at by the highway department. Uh, there will be no right-of-way acquisitions, so there's nothing there, or utilities relocated, nothing there. So, one hundred percent, maximum three hundred thousand dollars. And of course, the city would, would, uh, if there was any right-of-way or utilities, we'd have to pay a hundred percent. You can all see that there on the resolution, but there's not gonna be any of that. Uh, city projects program, not let to contract, all phases, again, one hundred percent. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council, the City of Warren, Arkansas, in section one, the city will participate in accordance with its designated responsibilities in this project. Section two, the mayor, his designated, hereby authorized and directed, execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city project. Section three, the city agrees upon completion of the project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or others, including utilities and individuals, in accordance with the prevailing Arkansas Department of Transportation regulations. Section four, the city, excuse me, pledges to its full support, hereby authorizes Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project.
I move that we adopt resolution number six ninety-one, second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion?
Any matching dollars required, or anything, it's just.
No, the, the only thing this is saying is, if we didn't have total right-of-way.
Okay.
Or if we had to move utilities, or something.
That's what I heard, but I.
And none of that's involved in this, so, I think this is kind of a boilerplate, probably, resolution from the state.
Call for the vote.
All in favor, show of hands, I see four in favor, thank you, that'll help us, uh, Monty's.
And look at, and look at topics.
Oh, yes, we'll get you a copy of that, absolutely. Okay, uh, anything else from the street committee, or Mr. Hearn's Burger, any questions?
Where's the committee, really?
Any, anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Community Ignorant Development, Councilmember Marshall, Chairman.
As far as, uh, the items listed, update on the Joshua recruit, that, um, privacy fencing, the city property on Main Street, and then the MSI grant, don't have anything to add at this particular time, other than, um, scheduled meeting, so that we can talk about these additional issues, as well as employee recognition.
Okay, uh, we are trying to get the survey done, it's taking forever, but we are trying to get that done, and, uh, just as a little bit of an update on the industrial park project.
Mm-huh.
Uh, industrial project, we are literally waiting on the appraisal to be finished. I talked to the company today, that's what they're waiting on, and they hope to have it this week. Ways and Means, Chairman Henderson, I turn it over to you.
I'm ready. The City of Warren Ways and Means Committee met on January third, twenty twenty-four, at four forty-five P M. All of the members were present, along with Mayor Reed and his assistant, Charlotte Brown. A handout was given to each committee member as a review. The prayer was rendered by Jefferson Henderson to include honoring the life of a former employee, Ricky Davis. There were nine items listed on the agenda. The first item, the fact of the amendment to the twenty twenty-three budget. The state law states that we, we are required to have a balanced budget, and we have resolution number eight six nine oh. And Mayor, would you?
Yes, ma'am.
The resolution?
Uh, we'd be glad to, thank you. Resolute, proposed resolution number eight six ninety, resolution, amending resolution eight six seventy-eight, City of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year twenty twenty-three, appropriating funds for said city budget and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor submitted to the City Council approval, this approval of the proposed budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year twenty twenty-three, whereas the following budget's been approved by majority members of the City Council at a meeting called for this purpose, whereas said budget is now en filed, the office of the City Clerk shall be available for public inspection during regular business hours, be entertained by the City Council of Warren, Arkansas. Section one of resolution number eight six eighty, City of Warren, Arkansas, is hereby amended, read as follows, that the following budget for the operations of the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year twenty twenty-three, be in the same as hereby approved, and funds in set amount are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year twenty twenty-three, time and time as needed. Detailed budget documents should be available in the office of the City Clerk, for public inspection during the regular business hours. Attached to that are the amended, uh, dollar amounts by category, and, uh, the total, uh, budget. Sure, I'll say this right, I'm just gonna read the total, uh, on the, on the budget for twenty twenty-three is total general fund is four mil-, uh, four million two hundred thirty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars eighty-four cents. The street fund is amended to seven hundred thirty-five thousand one oh eight fifty-four. And the other, uh, fund category is one million six hundred fourteen thousand five ninety-six fifty-four. This is the so-called reconciliation.
And the grand total was?
The, I'm sorry, the grand total is, uh, six billion five hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars ninety-two cents.
I move that we adopt resolution eight six nine, second.
All right, I think we've got a couple of seconds, I think, uh.
I give it to you. And the marshal.
Councilmember Marshall, she gives it to you for a second, so. All right, question or discussion? That's a lot of words just to say we're reconciling the budget, but that's what, what it matters.
And the state law requires.
And it absolutely does. All in favor, show of hands, four in favor, thank you all.
Okay, the next item listed was the property insurance, and as you are aware, uh, the administration continues to work with getting appraisal on our property, and we're asking for quotes from the Arkansas Municipal League, so this item will remain on the agenda for the, uh, Ways and Means Committee. The next item listed was the chain of commerce contract, as, uh, there was no recommendation from the committee. Uh, during our committee meeting, again, there was no recommendation, this item, uh, we're asking to be removed from the agenda of the Ways and Means Committee. The next item is the Bradley County Historical Museum, the chairperson of the museum, and the museum committee members requesting two thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, last contractual agreement year, it was two thousand dollars. The committee is recommending that we contract with the Bradley County Historical Society, two thousand dollars for this, uh, physical year. I move that the City of Warren contract with the Bradley County Historical Society, two thousand dollars for them to provide historical artifacts and other historical items for citizens of the City of Warren. Second.
Notions made and seconded, question or discussion, this would be the inner contract for two thousand dollars. Any other discussion, all in favor, show of hands, I see four in favor, approved.
The next item listed is that, uh, land, uh, purchase. Uh, the committee did discuss, and know that there is a need for, uh, economic development with land. We are asking that a full committee of the council be called at a regular city council meeting, and invite the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, I hope, to come and, uh, meet with us. Also, asking to get the parcel, uh, number, so that we can go and look at the property.
Uh, and Mike just mentioned, I have a request in to, had for all ready to come in February, and I'd also.
In February?
Yes, it's a February council meeting.
Okay.
I hadn't heard back yet, but I do have that request in, and I also would ask, uh, for an aerial.
Plan.
Some, something y'all can look at and see where the land is.
Yes, I think that's very important.
Maybe I'll have that coming very, very soon.
I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on that, and you know the land that we're referencing, correct?
Yes.
Let me get that one in, okay. Uh, the next item listed is, uh, the district court, uh, salaries. Uh, the district court employees did receive a two percent increase, just as all other city employees. Uh, we are asking that this item be removed from the Ways and Means, uh, committee agenda. The next item listed is city council, uh, salaries. The Warren City Council aldermen have not received an increase in twenty-five plus years. The administration provided for us, uh, rates for councils within our surrounding areas, and I went through the, uh, census, uh, website to get the actual population. I will share the population as well as the monthly amount. Crossed, uh, their population for the city listed on the twenty twenty-one census was four thousand seven hundred and six individuals. Uh, their monthly allotment is five forty-one sixty-seven. Fordice, population, three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine, their monthly, um, stipend is three fifteen seventy-one. Hamburg, population, according to the census of twenty point one, is two thousand six hundred and forty-nine individuals, their allotment is one seventy-five. Monticello, uh, census population in twenty twenty-one, eight thousand three hundred and eight, their allotment is three eighty-nine point fifty-nine. Star City, population, two thousand two hundred and forty-six, their allotment, three hundred and fifty dollars. Warren, uh, population, according to the twenty twenty-one census, five thousand four hundred and fifty-four, the allotment is two fifty. Based upon the comparison, I move that the aldermen's, uh, salaries for the City of Warren be three hundred and fifty dollars retroactive to January one, twenty twenty-four, and that two percent cost of living increase be included going forward, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Question or discussion? Make everybody clear what the motion is, all those in favor, show of hands, I see four votes in favor.
Okay, the next item listed is the, uh, city pool, uh, manager. And what we did, again, we, uh, looked at surrounding, uh, areas, and did a comparison. For the City of Monticello, the part-time seasonal pool manager, uh, is paid every two weeks, one thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, for Crossed, uh, which is a little bit different, they're paid every, uh, two weeks, but it's by the hour, uh, fifteen dollars and fifty cent, uh, per hour. And then, of course, for, uh, Warren, uh, our pool manager is receiving a total salary for the season, uh, four thousand dollars, which has been one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cent. The committee is recommending, and I move that the part-time pool managers', uh, salaries be that in, um, in, well, relating to Monticello, being paid one thousand two hundred dollars every two weeks, with the season beginning in May and ending in August. That is my motion.
Okay, twelve hundred dollars every two weeks, beginning in August?
Uh-uh, May.
May, is that right, May, ending in August?
Correct.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I got a second. I got a second, Alvin Atkins, is there any question or discussion?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're gonna extend the days like myself.
Are we going to what now?
No, it's Monday through Saturday.
Monday, so we're gonna pass Saturday.
Well, we had to, we do it according to when, if we have kids come, we open, but as the summer goes on, we close on Saturday, because nobody comes.
Monday through Saturday. And from May to August.
Okay. Any other question or discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, show of hands, I see three in favor, any opposed? And one abstention, one abstention, okay, that's three, uh, I'm gonna have to have a fourth vote, and the mayor will vote yes. So that will, that will set the salary, okay, thank you.
And the last item listed is, uh, that we are so happy that we did receive the American Rescue Dollars. Uh, however, we do, uh, have to utilize those funds by December, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, you will note that, uh, a large majority is already obligated, uh, streets, et cetera, however, we do have a balance. And we are looking at utilizing, uh, some of those funds for the kitchen at the old, uh, depot. Uh, we understand that we do have to have, uh, an architect or someone to come out to, uh, make sure that we are not uh, violating the historical piece of that building, as well as the old street, uh, shop getting, uh, the paint-up, fix-up, uh, done. And as soon as we find out what those dollars are, as well as the funds already obligated, we will probably have a zero down. But, uh, we will keep you updated, and that ends my report, are there any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate, again, you and your committee's, uh, hard work on a lot of different, uh, matters. All right, uh, let's see, Parks and Rec, Mr. Waggonen, uh, worked about a half day today, and he apparently came down with something, got sick, and notified us, he was going home, and said he didn't need to be around people, he was not feeling well at all.
And we certainly didn't.
But there is a report, there is a report in, uh, in this, uh, packet there, and, or in your packet, and if you've got any questions, I'll, you'll try to answer them, or I'll get you an answer.
And one thing I want to remind you, called Interjean about adding a light at the sea pool, we talked about that?
Yes, we're, we're, we are looking, working on that, yes, absolutely. All right, planning commission is not met, I'm sorry.
Mentoring lights, I know that our street foreman says that he goes around, you know, get up early and put like some kind of ribbon or something on. For whatever reason, these lights are not being replaced, uh, can we call them or something to see?
Well, that's, that's exactly what we're supposed to be doing, and I think we do notify them, uh, e- either, you know, sometimes people, citizens call in, say the street light's out, you know, on my street or in front of my house, and we certainly re, uh, report those, and then we, we, uh, when the street foreman does what he says, he turns that information into us, and then we, we turn that in also. I think we've just been having trouble getting Interjean a timely manner to, you know, get around and get it done.
Is there anyone we can call, I know even over by the pool that was vandalized, that light is still out.
Okay, uh, we'll just check, uh, we'll have to check on that, but, I mean, the, that's who's supposed to be doing it.
Yeah, I mean, he says he puts a ribbon on, on.
Well, he marks some, some they'll know, and then we call them and tell them, you know, certain, certain street and.
This has been, what, four months, and it still has not been replaced.
And that light will be on Rock Street?
Uh, no, it's actually on Hampton Street, right, right there by, uh, Everett Wallace's house.
Okay, okay.
But it, it would also provide light over at the pool.
Got you, we will follow up on that. We, it's been, it's been a slow go getting some of that done, but four months is a long time, so. Making a note of that, so I don't forget. Okay, planning commission, no business, aviation, no business, water sewer, you've got their finances and minutes and so forth. Uh, housing authority, they have met, you can look at that. Point out that we've got some vacancies in some of our public housing, uh, not a lot, but we've got some, of course, there's certain criteria that have to be met, but people out there, they're looking for someplace to live, if they meet the criteria and income, they, they should check with the housing authority, because there, there is some, few places there. Uh, cultural center, you've got that month of report, I am, uh, uh, was called a day, a day by the development district, and apparently the grant we've got pending uh, for the cultural center is under review, they have a few questions, but we're trying to get them answered, uh, very quickly. And, uh, Patricia Harrowbrook, the director of the agency, actually called me, I think she's having to handle all this herself, she's lost a couple of staff people, one retired, is handling this for us, and Ricky Works, and, uh, I think even his, uh, the Bond ready Tracy, uh, I think, has gone out. So she's a little shorthanded, but she is working on it. Uh, and item nine, I know this has been over here a long time, but we are making some efforts to get some money, or see if we can find some for the two roofs, this building and Mercy Services Center, we will be trying to come up with something to bring you here very soon. Under new business, we've got the personnel policy review, uh, we, the staff spent most of last year going through, this is not the pay plan, this is the personnel policy. Uh, trying to come up with some revisions and things that we thought need to be changed, we would like to, uh, assign that to the Ways and Means Committee, give them, get them a copy of it, and then, of course, uh, sit down with them at some point and, and go over it, and it'll ultimately have to come back to the local council if we make any changes. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I, I know you mentioned Patricia and the cultural center grant, but, but, uh, during the agenda meeting, you know, I mentioned if you could check to see if there's any kind of a grant or something over on the Tinsel Road area, you know, that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
See if she has any ideas.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely talk to her about that, I mean. I, I did, haven't done that yet, but yes. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, without objection, we're gonna sign the personnel policy to the Ways and Means Committee, is that okay? If there's objections, say so, Chairman, don't get them jabbed, I'm just kidding here, all right, uh.
I'm actually working on the statement, I guess, that, uh, okay.
Announcements, I remind everybody, the winter con- conference, you may end up being on winter conference, I don't know, depending on the weather, but it does start Wednesday in Little Rock, for those of you that have registered. Uh, I intend to go up, uh, Wednesday, and, uh, we've got some staff people, City Clerk is going to go, her health situation, I think she's decided she's not going to, but a lot of it, a lot of it we do, uh, virtually, and we got a lot of good bits of staff that's gonna take part in some virtual, uh, parts of the program as well. Remind everybody, the municipal building will be closed Monday, January the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the service and Martin Luther King holiday. We will pick up garbage. We will pick up garbage, but the municipal building will be closed. And as the policemen and the firemen always remind me, they don't get off. I remind them they get extra pay for it, so, uh, some of them will have to work. Bills for December twenty twenty-third.
Move that we pay the bills. Second.
Motion's made, who said that?
I'm here to, Alderman Atkins.
Alderman Atkins makes the second, if we approve the bills for December twenty twenty-three, question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands, I see four in favor. Next meeting would be February the twelfth, we agenda meeting on the eighth. And then y'all can have your choice of how you want me to adjourn this meeting, you wanna make a motion or just adjourn. And without further objections, the mayor declares the meeting adjourned. And I did get my copy of the Roberts Road order, Councilmember Henderson, the newest edition.
You got it?
I got it.